I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for May 14th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded and can also be reviewed on youtube.com/northadams. North Adams is all one word. Just click on the live tab, then on the 2024-05-14 City Council Meeting. Would you call the roll, please?
Blackman. Bona.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Fitch.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Alesskowitz.
Yes.
Sapienza.
Yes.
Shade.
Mayor.
Wilkinson.
Okay, seven members present. We have a quorum. Please stand for the moment of silent remembrance. In the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the right of our citizens, our nation of God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as all. Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the April 23rd, 2024 City Council minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Fitch, Counselor Alesskowitz?
Nope. Was it Vienna? Oh, was it? Oh.
Yeah, it was me.
It was you?
I seconded it, yeah.
Counselor Morrow seconded. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Visitors on the agenda, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you have reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Anybody wish to speak to open forum? Okay, we've got quite a few. Please stand and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. Josh Valiers, 18 and 1/2 Hall Street. I'm going to keep this fairly succinct, just because we have a very full agenda tonight, it looks like. I just wanted to express my excitement, as I tend to do when the youth commission's on the agenda. I'm hoping we'll be seeing some more forward progress with the group, so I feel this public body is being sorely missed at a time when we need the input of young voices more than ever. I'm looking forward to any and all updates we may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Young lady in the back?
7:32.
Please step up to the microphone, please. Thank you. Either one.
I'm Heather Mello. Oops. Why do you want to be?
It is on. We can't hear it in the room, it's for the TV.
Okay. Heather Mello from the Spencer House LLC at 732 Main Street in Buckett. Hello, I've been here many times, I'm going to keep it short and sweet as well. I want to commend the board, I want to commend the mayor. I know that what some of the last line items in regards to the new regulations for cannabis are on the agenda at the end tonight. I want to let you know that we're all patiently waiting and are very excited to hear the new rollout. And just to let you know that, you know, we're still here, we're still ready to benefit our veterans, we're still doing the same thing, we're ready to make action, and we hope that you guys nail it, so, good luck.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen back here, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Dan Berger, 36 North Holden Street, Apartment 2. Early out myself there, in the city of North Adams. I am here to also speak on the cannabis ordinance. I'll try to keep it short as well, but, you know, I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but this ordinance does not look like it is substantially compliant with new state regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission. I've actually spoken with some of my contacts at the Cannabis Control Commission. Little bit of background about myself, I actually hold a license out in Salem, Massachusetts, and I actually have a host community agreement with the city of North Adams. So I'm actively working on bringing a business to fruition, and I think that it would behoove the city to maybe refer this to committee and take our time to wrap our heads around the new regulations and make sure everyone gets a fair shot. Thank you, as always.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Kyle Carden, 27 Wall Street, Apartment 1. I want to talk about affordable housing, because I thought that would be on the agenda. I want to state that the leading of cause of homelessness is the price of rent. And I think that many people in this room may not understand what it's like to face homelessness, the devastating feeling, how disempowering it can be. And this town faces serious challenges. I mean, the college's enrollment is at 50% capacity currently, the population of North Adams has been dwindling over the years, and the median age is 44. And so this is a progressively aging and reducing in size, community-wise. So my question to the council is, who's going to raise families here? How will you raise school enrollment and keep schools open? How will you attract and keep healthcare providers here? I mean, I travel an hour to see my PCP, I travel an hour and a half to see specialists. How will you attract jobs and investment here? You will not be able to if people like me can't afford to live here. Why would any young person with prospects choose to live here, when living an hour or two away from Boston costs just a few hundred dollars more every month? I cannot understate the importance of making North Adams friendlier to renters. This town's future depends on that. I mean, this town could be, you know, fall down the same path that other former industrialized, former factory towns fall down, or it could be a place that stands out in Massachusetts and New England. I mean, one of the best cities to live in across the world is Vienna, and in Vienna, they have an abundance of affordable public housing, and they have strict rent control. And so I would like the council to entertain those concepts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Andrew Bott, 1020 Old Mohawk Trail. So, last October.
Please speak into the microphone.
Last October, October 4th. Apparently there was a call to the North Adams Police about a dog that was in the neighborhood that was loose. North Adams Police responded, it was Officer Boudreaux and the former animal control specialist. They came over, talked to me, found me in my backyard playing with my puppy. They advised me my dog needed to be loosed when it was in the public. I said, okay.
Okay, I'm going to stop you at this moment, because is this on, this isn't on the agenda tonight? You have to speak at the end of the meeting, under open forum. This portion right here is four items that are on the agenda. Does this have to do with one of the agenda items tonight? Or is this just general information?
I received a ticket a week later, and I checked off that I was not guilty, we wanted a trial. And when I went to re-license my dog, they told me I couldn't re-license my dog, because I hadn't paid the fine, but I clearly marked, the instrument clearly says, I want a trial.
Okay, point of order. This is for the agenda only at this point. If you want to speak to that effect, we'll do this at the end of the meeting, when we have.
What is that?
Before we end the meeting, there's a portion of the meeting called open forum.
When should I come back?
I'm sorry?
When should I come back?
We'll be doing this tonight at the meeting, but we just do it at a different point of the meeting. This section of the meeting is open forum for agenda items.
How much time?
You have two minutes, just like you do.
I mean, before it happens.
About how long is estimated?
Depending on how quickly our things go, between 30 and 45 minutes.
Do something else and come back?
Yes, you can do that.
Like, by how much? How much time?
Yeah. Stay close, thank you.
I was hoping for half an hour. But you're welcome to stay, so you don't miss it.
Okay, anybody else on hearing of visitors?
I think.
Yes, sir.
The open forum.
Okay, yep, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Lawrence Wilson, 1240 Mass Ave. I'm just coming in support of the Affordable Housing Act and all the information that will be provided tonight. Going off of what this gentleman said, you know, the young generation is the future of this city, and myself included. I am currently having issues and struggles with finding, you know, rental properties that I can afford, just with the prices going up. You know, a few years ago, I was like, it was much easier to find a space to live, and a space that I can afford, and a space that works. And with it being hard for me to find rental and needing two or possibly three other roommates to live with, it really makes me nervous about my future in this area, because I would like to be able to afford a home, and I would like to settle down in this space, but if things don't change, then I don't believe I will be able to. So I think that everything that is shared tonight with this presentation should really be taken into consideration, and based that on, you know, the future of what we want this town to become and who we want to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you get his name and address?
Lawrence Wilson, I think it did an address.
Okay, last chance for open forum, or, I'm sorry, hearing of visitors.
Isaiah Moore, 43 Highland Ave. Am I?
Take it right out.
Take it open. I usually come to these meetings without much to say, but today I want to go ahead and voice my support for multiple items on the agenda. First, I want to, I'm excited to see something happening with the Youth Commission. I work in jury. I've been around these youth, and I know that they are brilliant and exciting, challenging go-getters. I know that if we get this board up and running again, that it will be an improvement to our city. So I'm excited to hear what is said tonight. As well as, I'd like to support the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Act. I am fortunate enough to have a place of residence, but I know many of my friends, many of my fellow recent college graduates, many people that are excited and love the city, just as much as I do, that cannot live here, because of the fact that they cannot find housing, cannot find affordable housing, cannot find roommates. So please, please, counselors, take this presentation into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, before we move on? Name and address for the record.
Okay, shut up.
Excuse me.
I don't care. I'm getting sick of your nonsense.
Come on, let's take a timeout.
No, I'm not. I am sick of people's nonsense. Your rules and regulation. Who you think you are? You think you're, you talk among each other, you don't, you don't even explain what's going on half the time? I have a right. You don't have all the right. We need housing.
One more.
And you're just.
Yes.
Doing everything.
Get to second recess.
Yes, let's have a recess, please. Council Paper Number 11,826-1. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter 13, Articles 5 and 6, references to MGLs, postponed to the meeting of May 14th, 2024. All right, we need a motion to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
So moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Fitch, Counselor Bona. Any discussion on this? Counselor Shade.
Which changes?
This, I believe, is to change. Go back to my notes here.
This is the change from Mass General Law.
Okay.
Where we were citing Mass General Law.
Okay, it was the reference to the Mass General Law in the fines and fees?
Okay.
We're changing, we're changing the reference?
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Okay. Lisa's not here. Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven Yays.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 11,826-2. Excuse me. An order adopting the acceptance of Part 1, Title 14, Chapter 90, Section 20A and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, passed to a second reading and published as required by law. And this was published on May 1st, 2024. And can I get a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Alesskowitz, Counselor Bona. Any discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven Yays.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,336-2. An ordinance amending Chapter Z, entitled Zoning, Section 11.1.3, entitled Noise, passed to a second reading and published as required by law. This was published on May 1st?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, motion to adopt, and second, Counselor Shade, Counselor Alesskowitz. This is a roll call, isn't it? Yes.
It is.
Okay, this is a roll call. Any discussion? Counselor Shade.
Yes, just so we, everybody is understanding, on the agenda, it says to amend this section, but we're really repealing it completely. It will be removed from that section of the, for noise ordinance. So what it does is, instead of having a set noise limit, it's just going to go with the Thank you.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alesskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Seven Yays.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, Council Paper Number 12,383. Communication from Counselor Morrow requesting time for Cody Chamberlain to speak on the Youth Commission, and requesting of clarification on visions and goals. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Counselor Morrow, what is your pleasure on this?
Can I make a motion to refer it back to administration?
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Bona.
Yep. Also, once you get feedback from the administration, if it does come back to council, recommendation would be to have it go to general government, if it's any changing of the ordinance, the A lot of this was created by the city council. I remember under Counselor Marigan and Counselor Boland, and a lot of time was spent on it. And then it was revised years, a few years later, under Bernard. It has been an issue trying to keep the board filled, so we loosened up the restrictions that were on there of how often they had to meet, how many members there had to be, because it was definitely an issue getting the younger members to continue to go to meetings, so they weren't getting quorums. But I think at this moment, sending it to administration is wise, and again, if it comes back, I would just have, you know, if there's any changes, to have it go right to general government to discuss it further.
Any further discussion? Counselor Shade.
Yeah, thank you. First, thank you for bringing this commission up. It's an important one that is very underutilized in the sitting, so it's good to be brought some attention to it. I see some faces in the crowd here who I think would make great representatives if they want to get involved, because we do need more youth voices involved in the community. So, thank you for bringing it up. Thank you all for coming, and I hope that we can see it more active soon.
She motioned to refer to administration, so it's just a little nay vote.
Okay, so, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Counselor Morrow. Council Paper Number 12,384. Communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time for Virginia Reel to give a presentation on the North Adams Community Housing Organization, monicured NACHO, and opportunities for North Adams through the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Act. And I will read the communication from Counselor Fitch. Says, Dear fellow city councilors, I am requesting time for a 15-minute presentation by Virginia Reel to speak on behalf of the North Adams Community Housing Organization, NACHO, about the Massachusetts Affordable Housing Act and opportunities for North Adams to leverage the new funding. Presentation should have 15 minutes allocated to it, 10 minutes for the presentation, and five minutes for questions and answers. The presenter would like to present a PowerPoint, so the screen and projector will be used. Each counselor, the mayor, and the city clerk will have a printed version of the presentation available to them during the meeting. And signed, Counselor Fitch. Counselor?
Certainly, it is my pleasure to bring this topic.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Communication filed without objection. Now counsel.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It's my, it's my great pleasure to introduce Virginia Reel, though several of you already know Virginia, to the council tonight, because this is an important topic to many of us. We heard from several folks in the audience about that already, but I see this as an opportunity to steer the conversation to the future of North Adams, and building for the future of North Adams, and leveraging resources that are out there in the world already to make that happen. So Virginia, thank you for taking the time to come here tonight.
Do you want me to do your slides for you?
Oh, um, can, okay, great. (Laughter).
(Laughter).
Here, let me just give you your. Thank you. copies of the presentation.
Do we need to dim the lights at all?
Please.
The first two switches on the right, William? Perfect. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, looks good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. First of all, thanks to the council, thanks to the mayor, and also thanks to Mike Novelli and Bill Moranti, who met with us last Friday to also go through this presentation. So we really appreciate their time. And I am presenting on behalf of NACHO, and we hope that NACHO will become a favorite award and a favorite organization in our community. So some members of the group are here, I was going to ask them to stand up, so you can see them, and we have, we have several other members who are unable to be here tonight or joining us virtually. So, and we, I have a sense, based on the people who spoke before the meeting, that at the beginning of the meeting, that we're going to have more members. And so this is very exciting, to see that we've got community support. So, just to mention that NACHO is a grassroots organization. We started approximately November, and we really have come together and created this organization. We're thinking of lots of ideas, and we probably will be back here to talk to you as our plans mature. What we're starting with tonight is to talk about this legislation, because it has a substantial amount of money associated with it, which is a significant opportunity to North Adams to see some, get some of that money, bring it to the community, and be able to do things that perhaps were out of reach before. So I'm going to give you a quick overview of the proposal, and it's not going to go into all 121 pages, and summarize where it is as a piece of legislation, what the expectations are, and then talk about some possible ways that North Adams might prepare to be ready when this legislation is enacted, and it's very probably will, and be at the front of the line. So, the caveat I want to add here is, I have not read all 121 pages. I'm still working my way through that. So you may ask questions and find that I don't know the answers, but we'll work to get any answers that we don't have. So, all right. So just to say that housing challenges in this community, I don't need to tell you that we have housing challenges in this community, and this is just a list of many of the factors that you all are very well aware of. But what I wanted to point out in that table that comes from the Community Development Office Housing Needs Assessment, is down there in that little bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the extremely low. That is 1,000, a deficit of 1,000 housing units for people who are in that income category. That is 20% of the households in North Adams. We have 5,000 households in North Adams, according to the Census Bureau. So that is really, when I put those numbers together, it was really jaw-dropping even for me. So that, and it also, if we take the population, it affects 16% of the residents of the community at least. And I think these numbers are probably understated, because things have gotten more difficult since 2020, when this report was done. So, all right, next slide. So this is just a quick overview of what this bond issue and what's in this legislation. The overall funding in the legislation is $4.2 billion over five years. So this is a huge infusion of money to address the affordable housing issue statewide. The majority, the two big bars here, you'll see one, there are four initiatives that they have here, and one is housing production and preservation, that is the biggest share. The second is public housing. The third is vulnerable populations, and the fourth is middle-income buyers. So those are smaller, but still not insignificant money. So within those, there are 23 distinct funding streams across these initiatives. So that means there are 23 different programs to understand and figure out how to get that funding, and where the best opportunities are for the city. So we'll go to the next slide. All right. So we wanted to give you a few opportunities. There's $100 million for Public Housing Demonstration Program. That is really, at least as I read the language, there's flexibility there to do things that are innovative, that maybe couldn't be done under existing funding streams. And so that's one area of opportunity. The second is this trust fund that's being set up for housing stabilization, which again appears to have some flexibility in it, and opportunities for the city, in particular as a municipality, to access those funds. And just to say, the diversity of issues that are being discussed in here, one example is this early education and out-of-school program, and it's to give infused capital into those facilities that serve low-income families. And so that's not something, you know, when you think of affordable housing, we think maybe building houses, but this is about also building other things and having capital money flow into other areas that are also important. So, and then another area where there is potential funding is the seasonal communities designation. And although North Adams is not as impacted by seasonality, we are somewhat impacted, and there could be an opportunity there. There will be a person appointed by the governor to this committee that will decide the criteria, and the entire western part of Massachusetts will have one person. So if we, as a community, feel this is some area we really want to focus on, then that would, we might want to influence what that appointment. Let's go to the next slide. So, in a line, in parallel with this legislation, a study was done by the UMass Amherst, and they had this report, and it has a number of things in it, but one of which projected the results. for a community of this legislation and for the state writ large. And I was very sad when I read this because I felt there should be a much bigger impact in North Adams, North Adams and the entire Berkshire area. The need here is so immense. And so, the reason they came to these numbers is because this is a historical funding, the historical piece of the pie that has come to Berkshire County. And of course, I would say Berkshire County hasn't gotten what it needs, and nor has North Adams. And so, I think it shows how important it is for us to really assert ourselves and really try to make that number much larger than it is, and show the need, and advocate. Next slide. So, where's the legislation? I, I want to thank the staff of Senator Marks' office, who spent time on the phone with me and, and helped me get this information. They've been really gracious. We, it's, we'll, we'll be considered by the House Ways and Means Committee this month, and they expect to pass it over to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. I didn't hear any, like, big controversy around it. So, I think the governor's support for this is probably going to make this happen. And the target date is the end of June for the legislation to pass. There is an opportunity to offer amendments before it passes, and Senator Marks is willing to work with North Adams if there are amendments that they would like to suggest to see if that language could be added. Am I at 10 minutes?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, but I'm at eight minutes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm almost there. So, one area that we might want to consider is around the Gateway City Designation, which is a detriment to housing funding for North Adams, and maybe we could come some language that could be put in there that would make some part of the government able to offer a waiver to North Adams to be designated as the Gateway City. So, we want to be at the front of the line. Always good to be at the front of the line. So, let's go to the next slide. All right. So, what could happen here in North Adams so we're ready? We're just, like, ready to get out the gates. One is invest in grant writing and other supports for capturing funding. We have many, we have grant writers in the city government. They do a tremendous job, and, but this is an opportunity that, you know, is above and beyond the funding sources that are tapped today. And I think having more grant-writing resources in the city would be one of the key things to getting this funding. There may be a need to have additional resources to support the mayor in, in having liaison to the state agencies that will need to be our friends. We have stakeholders in the community who are out there building or doing renovations, or will need to be engaged in various ways to be part of this, and starting to work with them early so that they're, they too are ready to be on board. And then, consider funding and support for local housing trusts. This is one of the things Nacho is looking into, and I think we will be in a position to come back to the council and the mayor at some point to talk about what the value of that could be for the community. So, we're talking about North Adams being a hub, there being a hub for North Adams to get this funding. And so, that's our underlying idea, and that is my last slide, except for my thank you slide. So, are there questions?
Yes. Any questions? William, could I have you turn on the lights, please? Thank you very much.
Nope.
Counselor Brona?
Through the chair, and actually, this would be directed more to the mayor. If, when, if this happens, if things of this move forward, how much of this is going to be things that need to happen through your administration? How much of that would actually be coming through the city council that we would need to have to approve or act on? Is it, just curious, like, what would be the council's involvement in this?
Yeah, so, I mean, at this point, we're hopeful that the bond issue will be dispersed to us. It's mostly an administrative aspect. As we go through the process, if we need council support or more council education, we certainly would do that. I'd love to continue to work more closely with Virginia and her group as we evolve. It's a, it's a place in our Community Development Office, but may, you know, run into Counselor Fitch's Community Development Committee to work as, as a group to form this hub. But the work and research and legwork that this committee has done is incredible, and they, I applaud them for all of that. But when we're, we're there, we'll start working more strategically together. So, now it's really about fact-finding and education. Correct me if I'm wrong. And we'll roll it out as soon as we get the thumbs up, we're getting something.
Is there anything, though, like, forward to get to us the council will have to do?
Well, we don't-
Again, I was trying to figure out, like, where, where our, other than being a public, you know, advocate-
As we evolve through the, what is it, 200, 300 pages of reading, of reading, if there is an aspect that pertains to the council, we'll certainly be asking for your support. But I, I think at this point, we, I agree, we need to form this working group, which is already underway, and work together on it to navigate it.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll sign you up for this.
Well, no, I'm not saying, I just didn't know, like, if, if things are going to be coming to us, like, we need this approval from the council to do this.
Oh, I'm good at asking, so don't worry about that.
Okay. Counselor Shade?
Yes. First, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I do have a couple of questions that I'm hoping you can answer.
And if I can't, we'll get back to you.
Of course. So, the first, a lot of times with new legislation like this and, and funding breakdowns, they usually send out money by population rather than need. Do you know if there's anything in this bill that restricts things based on population, or is it going to actually be opened up for communities to get as much funding as there is?
As I said, I haven't read all 121 pages, but the parts, my exposure indicates some of this money is going to be awarded competitively, right? And in fact, there is some language in there about making sure that rural communities are a focus of this. So, you know, but this is like another place where maybe getting some language in there about the formulas or how, you know, that it shouldn't be a population-based formula, it should be a need-based formula would be really a good opportunity before it's passed, right? So, you know, some of it will be competitive. Some of it will, you know, probably follow the old thing, but if we can get that need-based perspective in there, I think it would be really important.
Absolutely. I think having a proportion of the budget reserved for lower-population communities is really important because these kind of packages tend to all stay out in eastern Massachusetts. And I get that money is spent where people are, but if they were to develop things out here, we'd have more people here. So, you know, it's the catch-22 of it all. The second thing I wanted to bring up, it wasn't brought up here, but it was brought up in public comments. Somebody mentioned the word rent control. Rent control is not legal in Massachusetts. There was a, an amendment passed by the voters back in the mid-'90s, I believe it was 1994, that banned rent control in Massachusetts because it had been enacted for decades, and property values weren't growing properly out in eastern Massachusetts. Now, they've skyrocketed. I do know that there are groups trying to get the ballot question back on the ballot, but at this time, rent control policies are not allowed to be instituted by any community in the state. And that was, the voters decided that. It's in the state constitution, so the only way it can come out is in a ballot initiative. So, if that's something that's important to you, get involved. Look into that, just so everybody knows. As a renter, I'm very concerned with rising rent prices as well. And so, I completely understand. I rent where I live. I've been there for 10 years. I don't have any plans on moving. I like, I like my home. So, I totally understand the need for relief when it comes to the prices going up as exponentially as they are. But there's really, at the moment, limited options as to what policy-wise we can do to, to help with that. So, just so everybody's aware and the public understands that. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Counselor Leskowitz?
Does the availability of space for affordable housing have anything, play any role in the dispersion of the funds? We did, I believe, three or four years ago, we did pass 40R, which opened up zoning for areas of larger scale affordable housing?
Yeah. I didn't see that, but as I said, I haven't read every word, you know. One of the things I'll say is that it does create the opportunity to acquire state-owned land for affordable housing. So, that was really interesting to me. I don't know what the state-owned lands picture is here, but that, you know, doesn't go directly to your question. Indirectly, you say there is pieces in here around, you know, property and land, and also expediting the process once a property has gone over to the state to try to expedite that process. So, that also could be brought into affordable housing.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else?
Okay. My last, my last little piece of inspiration is, instead of thinking about why we can't do things, some of those barriers are real. We need to think, how can we make progress on this problem? What are the things we can do that will make a difference in this community and increase affordable housing?
Hey, thank you very much. And one suggestion, one suggestion would be to contact your representatives and bug them, you know, tell them, we want, we want affordable housing in Berkshire County and in northern-
And I'm sure they would love to hear from the council or from the mayor, you know, a letter from the council or, you know, from the mayor who was in regular communication with them would be really valuable.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. Council Paper Number 12,0385, a communication from Counselor Fitch requesting time for Kristi Edmonds, Director of Mass MoCA, to speak on their 25th anniversary and programming updates. And I'm going to read the communication. Dear councilors, I'm requesting time for a five-to-10-minute presentation by Kristi Edmonds, Director of the Massachusetts Museum of Contemporary Art, to speak about Mass MoCA 25th anniversary and programming updates. And I'm going to ask, do you have a PowerPoint at this point or not? You do. Thank you. All righty. And at this point, I am going to file the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch?
It's my great pleasure to introduce Kristi Edmonds to the group as well. Mass MoCA has contributed so much to North Adams over the years. I have benefited so significantly from it myself. It's a cultural attraction for us. It's a space for us to go to, and I know that they've worked very hard at developing a lot of great community programming as a part of their 25th anniversary celebration. So, thank you for coming today to speak about this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Morgan. Hi.
Well, I'm going to start. There is a presentation coming up, but I'm, I'm just going to start for the interest of time. And all these important things that are on your docket and what we're learning and gaining and thinking through as a city and as a community, one of the things that, to me, is a standout is that 25 years ago, on Memorial Day weekend, Mass MoCA opened its doors. It would have taken at least 10 years for the conversion of that factory site to, to have been able to even manifest the possibility to open its doors. And it was an epic adventure in transforming that factory into the largest multidisciplinary contemporary art museum in North America, a thing that I don't know that everybody in North Adams understands. In the broader art world, this is one of the largest and most significant places for the liberty of artistic expression in North America, and it lives here. And that a desirous dream to convert these mid-1800s, 1800s factory buildings, originally Arnold Print Works and then Sprague Electric Factory, on a sprawling 16-acre site for artistic and cultural use, was one that few people could even fathom possible. It did not happen without business and without government. It did not happen without the people who truly could see that vision. Importantly is that Mass MoCA does not own these factory buildings. North Adams does. We're not-for-profit, and it means that we raise money, and we consider in honor to do so, and a responsibility to do so, to steward all these buildings for that purpose. That purpose is also about committing to the support of the goals of the North Adams vision for 2030, and we're working to it. Mass MoCA has a mission that is connected to artistic expression, civic engagement, and the upholding of, of cultural diversity. It also has a direct mission to create economic impact for North Adams. But when you think about it, it took North Adams 150 years to build up an economy and a population that would fuel the high, high point of the city through manufacturing. And it took one sweeping loss to set it into a state of decline and blight and everything that we are now also working to legislate and work towards betterment around. And I think about it, what is possible in the next 25 years if we keep investing in the creative economy and a global reach that Mass MoCA now has in partnership and in accompaniment with the city? So, that's a little bit of a kind of summary of a massive journey, and, and we're about to celebrate that Memorial Weekend. We have a big, giant Community Day on May 25th. It's free for everyone. There's gallery tours, family story time, kids' space activities for young people, many live performances. There's campus tenant, all the tenants on the, on the properties, and, and food vendors are also activating for that weekend for our community and our, at least thousands of global and national visitors over the weekend. There's a conversation between the founder of Mass MoCA, Joe Thompson, and myself, the new arrival. That'll be sparkly, I'm sure. There's a members' reception. There's a performance in the Hunter Center, and there's a number of other kind of surprises that go on throughout it. We're also hosting a convening of young, impactful philanthropists that are looking at the same things that you were just talking about, housing. How do you match private investment with government support in order to generate new dynamics that might have durable good for the community? It's people who are probably in their 20s and 30s, along with others around the country, who are facing similar issues in their community, but they are looking to North Adams as a model for the way in which artists and an art practice and a creative culture builds optimism, builds new resources, and builds new possibilities. So, this is a major investment, and you will see people that you've never seen before wandering around the town, looking at things, all the things. The mayor, thankfully, will be presenting in this convening, but it is about a, a, a kind of duty of care around things that, beyond what artists make and express and do, is also how creative ideas function in our world. And to move the way in which pessimism and constantly being knocking, knocked back moves us from the resilience of being disappointed to the resilience of being ready for that which we can make and build together if we work together. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, we had a large strike at Mass MoCA, as you know, from the UAW 2110. It created a lot of difficulty for everybody. It was confusing. There's a lot of misinformation. Mass MoCA totally successfully brought what we needed to bear on, on closing out the strike. But some things, misinformation resumes or still lingers. So, I want to make sure everybody understands, yes, Wilco Solid Sound is coming back. All is good. It is going to be epic. The Chalet is still going on. North Adams Pride, on June 21st, we are also hosting on the campus. Yes. The Plastic Bag Store, which is an incredible immersive installation that is family-friendly, known the world over, is here. It is just open, and it is running on our campus throughout the entire summer and into the fall. This is really about environmental awareness. It is about narrative, films, all the things that we can do to understand it. And the artist, Robin Frohart, is incredible. She's been living in our community and thinking about things and adding things to her store out of, out of total repurposed plastics that reflect our own community for the past six months, and she'll stay on until the fall. So, she's getting to know this extraordinary community as well. Bayonne Academy Loud Weekend will happen. New exhibitions are happening. Osman Khan, Chris Doyle has a giant video installation. I know I'm color-commentary with names you don't know, but what you do know is that the integrity of creative purpose that can uplift us, join us, come over, check it out. These are people who are investing their creative expression into our community. They bring the world with them. We inform the world because they leave with all of us in mind. Jeffrey Gibson is also coming, I'll just put it out here, in the fall. Jeffrey Gibson is the first Native American artist to ever be represented at the Venice Biennale, which is the largest kind of cultural honor, perhaps globally. He will, we will be welcoming him back from a successful time in Venice and opening the next big, giant Building Five show with his work, which is called Powerful, powerful because we are different, which I'm feeling all over this room. I'm feeling all over this room. The other thing I want to mention here is that we will have a number of community convenings in July. Mass MoCA has finally finished, under new leadership, the next strategic plan. That strategic plan tells us and you how this organization is trying to make decisions for a tremendously changing culture over the next seven years, where we're putting our investments, how we're attracting them. And a very huge part of it is community intentionality with North Adams. The contribution to place, this is our home, North Adams, it'll be released really soon. It's important for you to read it because we are a bit of an economic anchor. And also, we are interdependent to all the civic infrastructure that we think we can collectively help manifest change and durable futures around, including climate, environment, and sustainable infrastructure. Is there going to be any slides or screw the slides?
Going without slides.
We're going without slides. So that was it. It's so much better with some color and imagery. But I, I can't tell you, I mean, I want to thank everybody in this community. I have learned so much about the deepest, deepest, deepest purposes. If we think about art and culture and museums and performance and festivals purely and only as some adjacency to the pressure points of our lives, we miss the opportunity to be in collaboration with people who are able to think and build a future world together and want to be in the context of this community. So for every artist that comes here, they're always blown away. And the lingering lasting capacity as we celebrate that 25 years is about also, what are we declaring for the 25 years ahead? If Mass MoCA goes backwards, we all go backwards. We understand that. But Mass MoCA was, we did not create a community that was built around a contemporary art museum. We were built around a factory that a contemporary art museum now inhabits. But we feel the responsibility utterly to uphold these buildings and spaces and land we don't own in service to betterment. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Happy anniversary, Mass MoCA. It's 25 years.
Okay. Any questions from the, any questions from the council for? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, not a question, but I just want to say thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Council paper number 12,0386, communication number 33 from Mayor Maxey on the appointment of Kimberly Ann Perry to the Board of Registriars for a term to expire on May 14, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Second from Counselor Morrow. Communication is filed without objection. Mayor, would you like to, nothing on that? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Council paper number 12,0387, communication number 34 from Mayor Maxey to provide notice to present fiscal year 2025 classification and compensation plan at the meeting of June 11, 2024, and request the attached draft plans be referred to the Finance Committee. And file the communication without objection. Mayor?
Good evening, everyone. So I'll take a deep breath. So before you tonight is a draft budget, which I request be referred to the Finance Committee. On your tables tonight are a list of all the Finance Committee meetings. I encourage everyone, including the public, to join us at those meetings and participate in the dialogue. My hope is to present a full budget on June 11. But myself and the Finance Committee members have a lot of work to do between now and then. So for this purpose, I request that this be referred to Finance, and then we can start doing our work.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Counselor Shade?
Second.
Counselor Fitch? Okay, any for, any discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes. Just want to echo what the mayor said. Please come to these meetings. This is where we talk about how we spend your money. So please come, please talk to us, please have input. The public deserves to be a part of the process.
Yes. Any other comments? Counselor Bona?
Yeah, we are planning to have the meetings shown live. Is that, I think?
Yep.
Yep. So they will be live. They won't be for outside zooming, but you will be able to watch them. As Counselor Shade was saying, you know, if you can't come, though, at least watch them. Or forward questions after the meetings or in advance if you have any questions because often, especially on social media, we will see people talk about, well, of course, I always use potholes. The potholes aren't being fixed. So where's my money going? Well, this shows you where your money's going. And right down to every line item and every department. So, you know, you can see that the mayor is not taking any trips to Bermuda. It's not in there. So.
I only go to Kansas.
There, Kansas, yeah. Lot cheaper. So, but this is, this is the budget. This is where your money goes. So.
And they are 100% participatory. You can't ask questions from the gallery.
Yes, you can. Yep. Yeah. And again, reiterating what Counselor Shade and Counselor Bona have said, it's very important. This is your tax money being divided up and spent amongst the various departments in the city. And we encourage everybody, if you can't make it to the meetings, our Finance Committee are, consist of Counselor Bona, Counselor Shade, and Counselor Fitch. Or you can contact any one of the councilors. Our addresses are on the city website. And we, we, we want to hear from you because this is your money. This is our money. And we want to make sure that it's spent in a very judicious manner. All right. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to refer this to the Finance Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, very good. This is going on to the Finance Committee. Council paper number 12,0387, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter Two, Section 27, with the fiscal year 2025 classification plan. Is this?
[inaudible].
Okay, all right. So, all right. And we'll have to do a roll call vote on this. Okay. So, no, just refer to the Finance Committee. Okay. All right. So fiscal 20, year 2025 classification plan, motion to refer to the Finance Committee would be in order.
So moved.
Counselor Shade?
Second.
Counselor Morrow, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Council paper number 12,0387-2, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter Two, Section 28, with the fiscal year 2025 compensation plan. And we need a motion to refer to the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Shade, Counselor Oleskowitz, any comments? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. 388, yes, okay. Council paper number 12,0388, communication number 35 from Mayor Maxey to provide notice to present fiscal year 2025 budget at the meeting of June 11, 2024, and to request the attached draft budget proposal be referred to the Finance Committee. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, please?
Same thing I said before, we're ready to go and work with the Finance Committee. We're, again, it's still a working document, but we're looking forward, the whole team is looking forward to working with the Finance Committee to dive into the numbers.
Thank you. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee with a return date of June 11, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Shade, Counselor Bona, any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Communication number 36 from Mayor Maxey to present draft language to update Chapter Z, Section 10 dash 12, 10 dot 12, entitled License Marijuana Establishments. I'm going to file the communication without objection. Mayor, would you like to speak on this, please?
Sure. This document is exactly that. It's a working draft. I think Mr. Berger said it well when, that there is still a lot of work to be done on the document. So as an administration, we were focused on the new legislative, legislation that I believe came out in November. And we've been kind of holding off as we've been hoping to get more information from the Cannabis Control Commission, which is very slow coming out. But we wanted to get the process started in regards to addressing courier and delivery businesses for cannabis, the removal of outdoor grow facilities, better define the number of retail cannabis businesses, as well as attempt to update the language per the, the new regulations. Nicole Constanza from KP Law is the mastermind behind all of the work that we do with this ordinance. So I'm very interested in getting this into committee, scheduling a time when Nicole can either come and work with the committee or zoom in. And really, this is an opportunity that I need my partners of the legislative branch to really dig in, do research, and provide us a really good ordinance. The first ordinance that was passed was a good document. And now that we're ready to take another look at it with the new regulations, this is where I ask my partners in government for help. And this is something that people are knocking on my door almost every day. Mr. Berger and I have been talking regularly for the last three years. Today you had Heather from Spencer House. We have Nerd. We have Sparkboro out there, as well as Mrs. Canali Schmidt, who is interested in opening doors. I don't have any crystal ball as to what that should look like, but I'm asking for my community partners, my city council, to really dig into this ordinance and do some great legislative work that needs to be done.
Thank you. What is your pleasure? Where would you, what committee would you like this to refer this to?
My, my, it's up to you who you want to go first.
Okay.
Or we could even, excuse me, Counselor, if we could even, even have a joint committee meeting if that's easier for people.
Okay. Counselor Shade?
Yeah, I move to send this to general government with a return date for the first meeting of July.
I'll second.
Okay. I'm also going to suggest, can we amend that motion to involve the Public Safety Committee?
I amend the, well, retract my motion and say to send this to Public Safety and General Government with a return date of July for, first meeting of July.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Oleskowitz?
I'd just like to thank Counselor Shade for taking into consideration like the time that this could probably take and it is pushed out until July because we do tend to see that the timeframes are very small and it's hard to get larger groups together with all the people that, that are needed. So, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shade?
Yeah. Again, to clarify why we're pushing it out to July with the budget meetings coming up, I want to take care of that first. And that way we do have time to get these meetings scheduled with all of the players that need to be involved. I think having a joint meeting would be great. So I'll coordinate that as Chair of General Government with you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
And I look forward to working on this and finding a solution. Thank you.
Counselor Brain?
Through the chair to the mayor. Once this has gone through the city solicitor, under the Mass General, it has to go on the ballot?
I don't think so.
That's what I was just reading. Yeah.
Okay.
So my question is, if we do this in July, is it going to be ready for November? Or is it gonna?
That's up to you.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Bona?
One, the committee can also get clarification from the solicitor how that has to work, you know, for timeline and how it has to go on the ballot. I guess one question I have is having a joint committee meeting, and I'm trying to remember how this works. If you have, let's say, five or six members now working together, you're going to have the majority of the councils sort of recommending and pre-voting before it goes to the council. So I'm not sure if that's typically okay or how, how we've worked it. I mean, one recommendation is you have general government run it and you invite members to be there from Public Safety, but not actually make it a joint meeting because, again, members could be there for that input. But I'm not sure how that works if you have six members making a recommendation to a council of nine. Basically, they've already pre-voted if they're in favor of it. So something, something to check into.
Definitely.
We could possibly work it as, you know, general government meets and then they turn the work over to Public Safety. Public Safety meets and turns it back over to the general government. We can do it that way as well, I would think. Okay, Counselor Shade, did you have something else to add?
Yeah. Through the chair to the mayor, the language that I'm seeing online, as far as looking up the new, what Mass General Law says, some of the draft language is inconsistent with Mass General Law.
So those are, so our first draft are sections that we were interested in changing. Nicole will give an overview of the areas that we really need to focus on.
Okay.
There's a lot to interpret there.
Yes. Okay. With that said, I think this is very doable. And I want to invite the public and people who are involved in this industry to be at those meetings, to have a voice, to have a say, to be able to ask questions, to be able to provide input. So just throwing that out there as well. If this is something that affects you, please come to those meetings and have your input as well. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Brain?
Yeah. It's, it's bad having a phone number that you've had for 50 years. So it's very easy for people to call me. One question that someone asked me, and I don't know if it can be answered tonight or not. They saw the thing about outdoors and everybody's with the smell and outdoors. The question to me was, the old mushroom factory, is that considered indoors or outdoors if they use that building?
The, oh, on Union Street. Well, I will just say, and on the record, I am totally opposed to outdoor grow in a community like ours. Whether that's indoor or outdoor, I think the gentleman who owns that property isn't planning on putting a grow there, a grow facility at this time. I haven't heard of such. As you all know, from my first few months as mayor, I fought very hard with New England Elkoming about the outdoor grow that was slated for Church Street. So my recommendation is we do not have any outdoor grow here within our city.
So I guess it's, it's definition. You know, there's four walls. Is it considered indoors because there's four walls?
Right.
You know?
And maybe, maybe a part of this exercise, well, my recommendation is no outdoor grow, period. But you're saying what defines outdoor grow?
Yes.
And that would be an exercise that I ask the General Government Committee or Public Safety Committee to work on those definitions in conjunction with what the state defines as such. Did that answer your question, Johnson?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, you know, somebody that's worried and, you know.
It's a question for the committee.
Yeah, absolutely. But you know my position on that already.
Oh, I already did.
Any further discussion?
Can I just add two things? The first is, I just wanted to report, last year in fiscal year 2023, we took in close to $521,000 in cannabis between sales tax, impact fees. And, and that's a lot of money. And most of that came from Clear Sky because Temesco really wasn't up and running quite yet. This year to date, we've taken in close to $254,000, but we still have to settle out two more quarters of this fiscal year. So it is somewhat of a lucrative business, but I want to make sure we do it right. I specifically don't want to pot shop on every single corner of our city. But I think- specifically don't want to pot shop on every single corner of our city. Um, but I think if we really work together and spend some time looking at the ordinance, it could be beneficial to us.
Okay. Moving on.
Oh, I forgot my second one, I'm sorry, Counselor.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And the other part was, um, if Counselor Shade, um, would like to have a pre-meet, um, just to talk about what we know thus far and our suggestions, I'm happy to do that in preparation for a really good working meeting in July.
Okay, moving on. Council paper number eleven thousand six four six dash D, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams, Chapter Z, Section ten dash twelve, ten dot twelve, entitled License Marijuana Establishments. And we're going to need a motion to refer this. Go ahead, Counselor Shade?
Yeah, point of order, um.
Yes.
I believe the communication should have been filed and we should have voted to send the ordinance to committee.
Okay.
This is the same.
This, alright, okay.
File the communication and then vote.
Well, I did file this communication.
Okay.
Yep. So now we're on to the actual ordinance.
Move to send to general government and Public Safety with a return date for the first meeting of July.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counselor Shade, Counselor Leskowitz, any further discussion? Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, there are no licenses tonight, and open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I'll tap the gavel when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. Okay. And, uh, yes, sir, please step up to the mic, and you know the drill, name and address for the record, please.
All right, good evening again, everyone. Josh Alliers, eighteen and a half Hall Street. Uh, six years ago, well, time flies. Six years ago in twenty eighteen, MCLA's Lead Academy hosted its yearly week-long session training incoming college students in the ways of academic and civic success. I found myself a member of this program in advance of my freshman year at college, and it changed the trajectory of my life and the lives of my fellow Lead Academy alum, some of which are here. Uh, also in the year of twenty eighteen was the culmination of work on the Eagle Street Parklet, a project that brought the street after which its name to life in a grand new way. Between Friday coffee, occasional live music, and general leisure, this parklet became a staple of the downtown community. I was proud of the work our community leaders put in bringing together residents from all walks of life, including our then incoming class of twenty twenty-two freshmen at Lead Academy. In aiding the goals of bringing to life the Eagle Street Parklet, my fellow students and I put hours of labor on top of the already existing months of work others in our community had put in. This parklet brought a sense of community and purpose to the students that may have otherwise stayed for four years and just took off. But these students, they found a home in the parklet that they worked on and a home in North Adams. Uh, we were all very disappointed with the state of the parklet after the demolition. And, you know, it's unfortunately the sad reality that, you know, we face that, um, you know, to know no fault of anyone but an aging building. It's unfortunate, but I and many others are not deterred in our Eagle Street optimism. I come here today as someone without answers and would like to ask the mayor, you know, during your updates, if you could address, um, what plans the city's considering in restoring the parklet. Um, because I and so many others, we were touched by the project and we were hoping to get some publicly facing information on any, any steps in its restoration. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next, yes, sir.
Hello, Isaiah Moore, still forty-three Highland Ave. Um, I didn't really plan on speaking again tonight, but I just want to go ahead and say as another lead alumni, um, Mayor, if there's anything that we can do, we're more than happy to do it. So keep us in the loop. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, gentleman in the back, please.
Dan Berger, thirty-six North Holden Street, apartment two again. Um, just want to thank everybody. I want to thank the mayor specifically for having put up with me for three years, basically almost incessantly. Uh, what'd you say?
I like your dad.
He's pretty great. Boogie is great. He's my spokesperson. I should bring him to the next meeting. But also, thank you to everyone who has fielded any call, taken any time to talk to me about this. I look forward to July, and I look forward to settling my roots even deeper in North Adams, hopefully by way of cannabis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, yes, sir.
Brian Griffin, ninety-five Church Street, apartment two. And first, I'd like to thank the mayor and all the counselors, everything, for your hard work and dedication to the city. Appreciate it. But also, I do a lot of walking around the city, and I've noticed as I've been doing it, there's been, there's like some sidewalks where there's been raised spots where they're kind of unsafe. And, uh, I was very happy to hear that especially along Ashland Street is being targeted for repairs. But I just wanted to pass some of the pictures around, and then just so, counselors, these pictures I took right here and, um, and back, and then I look forward in, uh, future meetings to hear updates on the plan for improvement, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please step up to the mic, name and address for the record.
Hi, Lillian Zavatsky, four four one East Main Street. Uh, so I'm also a member of Nacho. I just wanted to thank the council for giving us some time to present. And this is mostly addressed to the people in the public and the people that might be watching at home. So first off, if you want to connect with our group, you can email us at northadamscho@gmail.com. I think there's so many housing challenges, as we all know, in the city, and it's going to take all of us to kind of put our heads together. Uh, so send us an email, northadamscho@gmail.com. And then also tomorrow, the, ooh, E Office, Executive Office of Living and Housing Communities, I think I got, I got that right, is having a listening session, um, to, basically, the state is doing a series of listening sessions across the state to develop a housing plan, a five-year housing plan for the state of Massachusetts. There's going to be one in our area, and it's tomorrow. I know short notice at Berkshire Community College at two P M., two P M. to four P M. So if you guys want to share, um, your thoughts about housing, your ideas with the state, there's going to be a forum for that tomorrow, Berkshire Community College, two P M. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for open forum? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. Markey Vatney, eighty-three Bradley Street, North Adams, Mass. Um, I was born and raised in North Adams. I love North Adams. I'm here representing people who are on fixed incomes. I have lived, uh, through three phases of North Adams, the good, the bad, and the ugly. The good was when I was a, a young boy living on five ninety-three Barbour Street next to Graylock School. It was one of the first members to attend that school. As a teenager, I was graduated for nineteen sixty-five from Saint Joe High School with a senior class of a hundred and sixty-one. We had three high schools back then. We had Drury, Saint Joe, and McCann. We had two movie theaters on Main Street, and we had a population just north of twenty thousand people. The bad, Sprague Electric closes, losing five thousand jobs. James, uh, James Hunter Machine closed and another two hundred jobs were lost. General Cable closes and another one to two hundred, uh, jobs were lost. The North Adams Hospital shut down. Saint Joe High School closes. The ugly, eighty-five percent of all the homes in North Adams are over a hundred and twenty years old. Senior citizens represent close to forty-nine percent. The roads I travel every day are in need of major repair. Bradley Street, Church Street, Ashland Street, Route Two West. Also, there are forty-seven public schools in Berkshire County. The ratings for our schools are as follows. Graylock School rates, uh, ranks at twenty-eighth with two hundred and nineteen students.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap that up?
I'm, I will, thank you.
It's been two minutes, yep.
Call Grove, thirty-eight, thirty-eighth with two hundred and fifty-nine students. Drury, thirty-ninth with five hundred and twenty students. And Brayden, forty-second with two hundred and twenty-five students. In closing, give seniors over seventy a tax break regardless of their income. Stop doing the same business plan year after year and expecting different results. Let's be able to pay our bills at City Hall with a credit card, maybe. P S, I'm on a fixed income social security. My monthly raise was thirty, uh, sixty-two dollars. My wife was a teacher in, in, in Adams and North, in Adams for thirty-seven years.
Okay.
She, I'm almost done.
Okay.
She, she has her raise of thirty-five dollars a month. Please don't raise taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Yes, sir.
So I, I just want to add a few details to what I was saying earlier. I'm also an MCOA student. I didn't mention that, two minutes and all. Um, I've taken some classes in economics at MCOA.
Yes, uh, name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Kyle Carden.
Each time.
Kyle Carden, twenty-seven Wall Street, apartment one. So I've taken some classes in economics, and there's a lot of catch twenty-twos in economics. Uh, you know, if, if, if buyers for a certain product don't exist, then the industry to produce that product won't exist. And the same thing applies to things like housing. And I think across the state and across the country, we're seeing the importance of housing, how central housing is to people's lives. And so if there isn't housing for people like me gaining degrees at MCOA to then stay in the area for years, or if not the rest of our lives, we're not going to stay. Um, and I also want to address what you said, Council, Councilman, Councilwoman Shade, um, about, uh, rent control. It was news to me. I didn't know that that ban was in place. It doesn't surprise me. When I, before I came here today, I did a little bit of research, and, and in other states, they do have bans like that, too. New Mexico has a ban like that. And I think it was the city of Albuquerque, uh, the city council of Albuquerque was implored by, by community organizations to pass a resolution to basically send a message in an official form to the state government to repeal that ban. So maybe this council could consider doing so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Is that gentleman wishing to speak?
No, I, he's going to call me tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, very good. Okay, uh, let's move on to mayor's updates. Mayor?
Um, so I wanted to speak to Mr. Valiers and, um, Mr. Moore's comment about the parklet. Um, so we plan to restore that. Um, we are not done cleaning up F as a result of the demolition. Um, we are also, um, working with some landscapers to get us an estimate to attach to the insurance of the property owner. Um, our hope is we, um, Mr. Marienti and Mr. Loscarbo, we're going to meet with Mr. Waterman today to talk about how we're going to fix the sidewalk because of the crane, the area in front of where the parklet is, is dipped in. So we're hoping we can do a moderate repair to that rather quickly and get the parklet out very, very, very soon. Um, our hope is that we could maybe put up a fence until we get other landscaping ready, but certainly work, um, with people like you and people like the, the downtown people who helped build that park. Um, but we hope to restore it to better than what it was. Um, but it will be a community effort. Um, I think getting our hands in the dirt and working together is a really cool concept. Um, we did keep, um, most of the cobblestones. We tried to save some trees. We have most of the benches in storage, um, but it's going to be a lot of really just putting together and planting and that kind of things. Um, but we have to wait for Mr. Waterman to completely turn the site back over to us. Um, right now, it's not even graded and it, there's still a lot of rocks that need to be picked through and, and leveled off. Um, and then we have to fix the cement. Um, we're talking about maybe expanding the cement in a little bit further, so you kind of have a flat surface going in, so there'd be more sidewalk space there. Um, but again, um, those are plans in action kind of thing. Um, so we are, we are working on it, and we hope to get it restored as quick as we can. Um, but if I can get some money out of the insurance to do it, I'm going to do it. Um, I wanted to address also in my updates, Mr. Griffin about, um, did I say that, Mr. Griffin? Yes. Um, I thought I called you last. I had a flashback there to your dad. Um, about the sidewalks, um, we recently applied for two different grants, um, for sidewalk restoration. Ashland Street in itself is part of the Ashland Street Corridor improvements, um, which we are in the process of working on easements and title searches and things like that. Um, if you see spaces that have significant gaps, we probably know about them, but don't hesitate. And this is to anybody to give us a call or to call the Highway Department at six six two three one five seven. Um, we are going to start replacing some, um, sections of sidewalk in different places of the community. Um, because they are hazardous, we recognize that, and with a person like me who has some mobility issues, just a simple gap can, can make you fall. And so I, I'm sensitive to that. Um, but we have a long, 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 long list. Um, so please don't hesitate to reach out to us or the Highway Department about that, but it is on our radar. Um, we're trying to get some grant funding for that. Um, as we do work through the Community Development Office through the black grant, and we are doing roadways, um, in certain areas, we are able to replace sidewalks, and we are doing that. Um, I think Mr. Vatness talked about some of the streets being in, in bad condition. Um, we are kind of behind Berkshire Gas. Berkshire Gas has, and J S Ray have probably dug up every street in North Adams. We recognize that. Um, Houghton Street and Eagle Street are slated for reclamation. Mike New Valley has a whole slew of, um, projects, um, continuing up the Liberty Street and all those side streets. Um, Bracewell Ave and those side streets, as well as Prospect Street from Franklin, um, with design work going on Hudson, Herman, Jackson, and Montgomery. Um, Mark, if there's an issue on Bradley Street specifically, we can talk separately about that. We do know on Bradley Street, we have a runoff problem, um, which we are hoping that we address. We also have a runoff problem on Charlene Street that we're working on. Um, any pothole complaints, anything, please call the Highway Department again at six six two three one five seven. Um, but we're going to start seeing a lot of, um, projects coming out this summer for either complete reclamation or road paving. Um, but we're just kind of waiting for J S Ray to get out of our way. Um, we are, had a meeting last week with J S Ray and Berkshire Gas about the streets that we are not paving, um, to restore, to equal to, or better. Um, so I think they heard me loud and clear about that. We're also working on a better communication plan on shutting off streets and communicating that out to the public. Um, so thank you all for those comments. Let me just go through my notes. Um, also, I know a couple of counselors reached out to me throughout the week with, um, you know, uh, what's going on with Mass Avenue. Um, so through the Community Development Office, we received a Mass Works grant, um, close to four point six million dollars to put in a new storm water drainage culvert to capture all that water that's coming off the mountain in Wood Street, Ashton Ave, Mass Ave area. Um, we're about ninety-five percent complete. We're hoping that that can be done, um, very quickly in the next couple of weeks. While we were there, um, we looked to repair a water main issue, um, on a valve that I'm told is a hundred and forty years old. Um, we attempted to make that repair, which then we ran into some other problems which caused the street to be closed. Um, I was told going into today that the street, um, after hours will be open, so people will be able to drive through. Um, while we were working in that area, we had a failure of a gate separate from this project on, further up on Mass Avenue, um, which causes an issue for the people who were in Williamstown that were on our line. Um, we worked to resolve that as quickly as we can. We're up against an old water system, so while we fix one spot, then something bubbles up, but they may not be connected. Um, but I'm hopeful that Maxi will be milling tomorrow that section and then black topping. So let's hope that the street can be open. Um, I hate going all around myself, um, but that's a great project, and we're excited that we had an opportunity to at least try to fix the storm water and work on some areas that we probably wouldn't have an opportunity to do if we didn't have the street open.
All right.
Anything else?
Question?
Counselor Bona?
On the Eagle Street Park, um, with the property, where the building, the footprint, where the building was?
Modern Studio?
Right.
Yes.
Is there, has there been any discussion of what may happen with that property? Because if we fix up the park, Because if we fix up the park and then they go to develop that, is that gonna just mess up the park again? Is it maybe hand it over to the city and we make a bigger park? Has there been any discussion of that?
We have not had any discussion right now. We're in discussion with the insurance company about getting reimbursed for the demo.
Yeah.
And depending on how that conversation goes, I'm open for a donation of that land to us. Um, but those formal discussions have not been had.
Okay.
Um, as most of you know, that building came down, fell down quickly and it took us a while to try to mobilize and get it down. And it required us, or Mr. Waterman, to go brick by brick because we were trying to be sensitive to the former, uh, Desperados Building. Um, we did have, um, some damage done to that building. Um, so we all got hustled, got stuck in that phase, um, which we all wanted it to go much faster. It was, you know, killing all of us to see how slow it was, but it was all about safety of the other building. Um, we are focused on restoring it, but what we're gonna do with the other lot is yet to be determined and we don't own it. Um, but if the insurance company fails to reimburse us, there certainly will be a hefty lien on it.
Did, um, I know the previous meeting, um, it was discussed, the figures were gonna be around two hundred thousand. Did that have stayed within that?
One ninety.
Okay. Thank you.
A quick, uh, update. I understand that there have been water interruptions to the people in the Mass Ave new area of those water breaks. Are those ongoing or are those expected to be resolved?
So a couple, we've got three different things going over on Mass Ave. One is connecting the new storm water to the system. So that was intermittent for the people in, uh, Leonard Street, Wood Area, those streets. Um, the second issue, when we went to do the repair, um, we had to temporarily shut water off. It's all, as far as I know, I haven't received any calls myself. Um, that's all been restored. Um, the third issue on the Williamstown line, um, we had a struggle with pressure. Um, so that was a little longer of a process, but as I know right now, everyone has water. If they don't, they, again, they should call the Highway Department at six-six-two-three-one-five-seven or my office at six-six-two-three-thousand, extension three-two-one-six.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, the, um, one thing that wasn't brought up, but it has been discussed in the news, um, is, is there gonna be anything in the budget or anything we're coming to the council about the rec center, the proposed rec center?
Not quite yet. Um, I have some money squirreled away that I can use for recreation. I say that, it's not squirreled away. Uh, so we are gonna do that and then develop a revolving fund similar to what we've done for the skating rink. Our hope is only to operate that building through the summer and have a full-time operator on board. So then we would step back with programming and expenses and upkeep, um, but also work with this operator hopefully, um, in assessing a building needs and, and really taking the lead in a building needs assessment and development of that building. We're not in the business of running a rec center, um, but we've been very successful in turning the skating around, skating rink around, um, to be in the black. Um, so we're gonna invest a little bit of money. Um, right now, the biggest expense is cleaning that building. That building is filthy. Um, and we need to clean it, finish the roof, get the pool back up and running, and then start funding funneling programs. Um, so you won't see it in your budget because by the time it becomes a true expense, I hope to have an operator paying rent or investing in the building.
So, so the funds used now are funds that can be used for that without any of, uh, moving anything around?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, moving on. Uh, we're all set with open forum for the evening. Thank you. Okay.
I would just like to meet with Counselor Shade, President Sapienza, and Counselor Leskowitz after, and out back if we could.
Okay, thank you. All right. Counselor Green, yes.
Um, I, I wanna talk a little bit about, um...
Is this to the mayor? Is this to the mayor or is this counselor concerns?
Um, it's to the mayor and counselor concerns, so either way.
Okay, let's, let's get into counselor concerns and then I'll, uh, let you speak.
Okay.
All right? Okay, so counselor concerns and correspondence. Go ahead, Counselor Green.
Yeah. Uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about myself. Um, about ten years ago, I retired and I became a fixed income person. What that is, is they decided how much I will get a month for the rest of my life. And it's been ten years. And I had to make other decisions also. Leave or age in place. I've been in North Adams now seventy-one years. It's a great place and I wanted to age in place here. So, so I did that. The other thing I decided, uh, ten years ago is, what am I gonna do? I decided I'm gonna volunteer on things that I can make better for North Adams. And I've been on the McCann School Committee. This is my second term and I'm very, very proud of what's going on down there. That we, we have a new major down there, HVAC, that when the seniors graduate, they'll have certifications and documentations and they'll be paid sixty-two thousand dollars a year, uh, right out of high school. The entire building and the teacher for two years and all the equipment is from a grant. There is no dollar money from taxes whatsoever. We also, we have a hundred and sixty-three kids from North Adams. And, and last year was the first time McCann actually has a waiting list. We have, uh, no spaces available. If, if somebody moves out of the area, there, there's people that wanna jump right in. Um, we, we've had lots of kids go off to college into the trades. It's just a beautiful, beautiful school. We used a lot of the Eser money, the, the federal money to rehab the building because it was built in the sixties. And we did all the, the air exchange and asbestos and got the building up and running, uh, under the, the, with the new, um, equipment and everything. And that was one of my goals is to have better schools. And McCann is there and as the mayor knows, as, um, being a, a teacher for thirty years, academics are very, very important. And I've been attending all of the budget and, um, facilities, school committee meeting. We have an excellent, excellent superintendent, assistant superintendent, um, and business person in special ed. They, they, they took and redesigned the entire curriculum by grade level, spending less money and getting software for the, the elementary school through a grant. Eureka software is excellent. Tim, the assistant superintendent, has, has worked with, uh, MCOA where kids can receive college credits for free. And everybody knows how expensive college, college is. And it's substantial number of credits and there's even transportation because that's a hard thing for kids, you know? If they can't borrow a car, they can't get back for a class. That, the school system is in excellent shape. I wanna, I wanna see the, the scores go up a little bit and I think they're geared to do that now. I, 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 I'm, I'm really proud of the, the way they're organizing and this has been over a year. This is not a two-minute thing. And one thing that I wanna mention, their preliminary budget in January had an increase, an increase of twelve percent, two point four million dollars. They don't have that now. They have a one percent, a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe after all the dust settles, as the mayor wants to take the last hundred thousand dollars and fold it into school choice, they're gonna come with zero, uh, over what they had last year and have a better operation. The only sad thing, being a teacher, there's gonna be, and I don't know the number, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, young people, because that's what happens in a school system with seniority. The people that want to stay here and raise a family, they're gonna be gone to another school system and they've got their experience here and they certainly will be hired. Um, it's sad. Um, my wife and I are both teachers. My wife taught in Bennington for thirty-seven years because she taught two weeks in Drury and then two and a half came in. And she never came back. Um, so that, that's a problem. The, the other thing is that I wanna see higher-paying jobs. And I'm starting to see them, um, Darlene Radowitz, who is running BMC, is doing an excellent job in North Adams. If you go up to the hospital, the parking lot is filled. People have to park in the mayor's driveway. I mean, it's just unbelievable how busy they are and they're gonna expand more. And they're, they're great jobs. And so it's, it's good to see that. The third part is the difficult part. When my wife and I came back from Burlington, Vermont, from college, we bought a little tiny house down near the college. We paid twenty-four thousand dollars FHA and it was a lot of sweat equity. You know, I'd come home from work and have to work on the house. Thank God my, my father-in-law was a bricklayer. He did the chimneys. But it was manageable at a hundred and sixty dollars for a mortgage. Now, it's impossible. You have student loans and you, you have to have down payments of forty to fifty thousand dollars. House prices are going up. We need to address that because we want the young people to come into the area, young people to stay here. And you go on Zillow and it says, this is the price of the house. The school systems are three, not a nine or an eight. So people can come to this area, they can work at the hospital and live in Clarksville or Lanesboro or different places that are cheaper. They can even send their kids to school here, to McCann, and they can school choice in here. We've gotta get people to live here. When I was in high school, Mark was already out of high school, there were twenty-one thousand people in the city. Do you know how many there are today? Thirteen.
Thirteen, oh.
City clerk?
I believe it's around twelve thousand people.
Yeah, and heading for eleven. Heading for eleven. That's ten thousand people walked away. My kids included. There were no jobs. Everybody thirty, forty, and fifty are gone. We've gotta get them back. It's Mark and I. Everybody's in their seventies. I pay five hundred dollars a month taxes, five hundred dollars a month. I pay six thousand dollars taxes plus the fees. My, my concern is Mark's wrong about his wife's thirty-five dollars. It's thirty-two dollars and fifty cents. The governor, and this has just been published, is going to give a three percent cost of living adjustment for thirteen thousand dollars. That was the base of teachers. So eighty-four thousand teachers in Massachusetts are gonna get thirty-two dollars and fifty cents a month.
Counselor Breen, can we wrap that up, please?
In a minute. I have the floor. My concern is we have to make sure the budget, we have to draw the line. We can't increase taxes. I can't afford it, to be honest. Electricity's gone up, insurance has gone up, we go to the doctors more, prescriptions are gonna eat that thirty-two dollars. We, we have to make sure that we have this part of the city budget. The school part has done it. The city budget right now, thank God it's a draft, is at four point five-two. There's a lot of pay increases at two percent, so that means the expenses are very, very high, six and seven percent to balance it out. So we have to make sure that we go through, when, if the overtime says three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, because they've added a hundred and twenty thousand, we have four or five new patrolmen. Overtime goes down, not up. We have to look at those things. There's a lot of items, there's a lot of room that we can save some money.
This isn't the platform for this...
This is my conversation. This is a platform for finance committee or...
We're crossing a line into debate on this, so let's, uh...
Okay, so, so, so my point is the facts don't change. This is where we are. We have to make sure that people can stay and live in town. We have to make sure young people can come and live here. We have a lot of empty houses that are falling apart. It's better to spend the money up in the neighborhoods than down in, on the main street. I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay, um, I did jump ahead and, uh, I'm gonna jump back without objection. I'm gonna jump back to committee reports in minutes. Okay, uh, further counselor concerns? Counselor Fitch, did you have something?
I, I have just a couple of updates.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, one, uh, it's actually through the chair to the mayor and if you're not ready to speak about this, Mayor Maxie, please don't worry about it, but I feel like you forgot something in your council update section about maybe some new lights that are downtown. Did you wanna talk about anything to do with the marquee?
Listen, I've had a rough night tonight. Um, yeah, so the marquee's lit. It looks beautiful. Um, we're excited about it. Unfortunately, as most of you know, it got lit prematurely. Um, so I wanted to surprise the First Friday people and just light it up, um, last week or two weeks ago. Um, we still have some work to do. We're not satisfied with the color underneath, um, but it's there, it's restored, it looks beautiful. I thank everyone who sends me their different pictures. I, I have a whole book of, of pictures. Um, but, you know, it's the, kind of the heart of our downtown. It, it gives us a glow. Um, so thank you for reminding me of that. Um, but we, you know, we're, we were fortunate that we did receive a grant, um, for some of that work and we had the ability to put in the rest of it. It really is the heart and the gem of our community and it keeps that piece of history present. So thank you for reminding me of that. We do have nine light bulbs that are out though. Um, anyone can come out and count them with me. I'm there every night. Um, but, you know, again, work in progress, folks, but, um, we're not done with it yet. But thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, uh...
Yes, and then just one more thing too. As we're going into this budgetary process, kind of summing up everything that we heard from the gallery tonight and, um, some of the different presentations too, investment in the future is something that I perceive that we need to do. And, um, you know, I, I'm very curious about making sure that this budget supports that, that, that forward motion, um, and the investment in our community. So that's something that I'll be advocating for and try to work on.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, a couple of things, uh, from, uh, the First Finance Committee meeting will be tomorrow night, Wednesday, May fifteenth, at five-thirty PM, and that will be held right here in the council chambers. So if you can make it, I encourage all that, uh, are available to come down and observe those proceedings. And again, it is a public forum. You will have a chance to voice your, uh, opinion. Also, I have a count, uh, an update from Clerk Leonazio regarding the Code E three sixty updates. Clerk?
So we thought it would be really good to share with everybody. To date, we have uploaded, um, roughly fifty-four, um, fifty-two, uh, different ordinances to the site, updating the ordinance site. We are going to be, the last of it is gonna be about eight of them. And those are gonna be uploaded shortly. I'll be sending them into Ecode and then you'll see them on the laws and the ones, the thirty ones that are in the laws right now. General code is currently working to upload them and integrate them into our ordinances. So wanted to make sure that I let everybody know that.
For clarity, the fifty-two, fifty-four ordinances, these are a span going back over a decade?
Um, they've spanned, there's a few of them, not, not a lot, that were pretty old, that were not up there, but mostly from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, um, and obviously, or twenty twenty-three was ones that we were uploading as we were doing them.
Thank you. Okay, one further update, uh, to refer to Mr. Griffin's, uh, comments on the walks on Ashland Street. I, myself, do walk around that neighborhood quite frequently and yes, I understand there are parts of that sidewalk that are in, uh, bad shape, but I have seen some repairs being made on Church Street where the crumbled and, uh, upheaved concrete has been removed and has been replaced with, uh, asphalt. And I do commend the, uh, Public Works Department and Mayor Maxie for getting those items done. Counselor Breen?
I have a question. Um, they're doing gas works going up Eagle Street and I saw they were black topping sidewalks. Are they gonna be concrete later on?
Yes, the black top sidewalks are just temporary.
Oh, good.
At this point, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the question.
Okay, any further counselors?
Well, just clearly for streets, so like if they were black top, they'll just be black top. If they're concrete, they'll be concrete.
Yep, okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? Okay, correspondence? Any correspondence? Hearing none. I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Leskowitz, Counselor Morrow, all in favor?
Aye.